We can have a moment of silence to keep in our thoughts and prayers, law enforcement, and emergency response, and our troops always come on free. Thank you. Pledge?
Pledge of the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and free and just.
We have two hearing minutes. We have the company and the public and the newspaper. They're posted on the Littlesex County website. We go over the front door, both in form of Littlesex County District Building at 40 hours. And then at the meeting, we'll tell the conference.
Vocal?
County Commissioner Aswad Waterer?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Garret Rios?
Here.
You have recognitions?
Yes. We have two, ordering members of the Carter Street Department. You received Detective Joseph Seals Battle Award for their heroism in the Bristol Station apartment building number four. And from February of last three months, we have two.
Is there a motion to adopt it?
Second.
Vocal?
County Commissioner Aswad Waterer?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Garret Rios?
Yes.
And the Carter Street Department is here.
Yes. Commissioner Nara, you want to join me? If the Carter Police Officers want to come up here behind us over here. Joining me is Deputy Director Commissioner Nara, who is the Chair of our Public Safety and Health Committee. And we felt it appropriate as a Commissioner Board to recognize our Carter Police Department, happens to be my hometown, and I was very proud of our police officers throughout all of this county as well. But they're heroes. That's the bottom line, they're heroes. They went into, they got a call, and they went into a fire at Bristol Station apartment building number four. And there were, it was nine officers, Detective Lieutenant John Kelly, Detective Louis Maldonado, Raul Martinez, Anthony Ramos, Eric Kuzman, Justin Craig, and Officers Michael Kelly and Javier Barrero and Derek, I hope it turned out to be right, Blavino. They responded to that fire at building four on July 11th. When they arrived at the building, all nine officers ran in and bravely evacuated the residents without knowing the extent of the fire. And then they went to building six and assisted the fire department in their efforts. And when they went into building four, unbeknownst to them, the fire was already up to the roof. They evacuated all the residents there, and not one of them got hurt. We had no loss of life, thank God, of residents or our police officers. On behalf of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners, we recognize and thank you for your service on this excellent deed that you did. You were recognized by the Attorney General, Andrew Brock, for the Joseph Seals Battle Award. That's commendable. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you for your heroism and being careful and doing what you do. Commissioner Nara, you want to say something?
Just really briefly, I think all of you men epitomize the bravery and the dedication that is exhibited all over our county, and it makes us so proud to be residents of Middlesex. And all I can say is thank you on behalf of all our fellow residents and our appreciation board.
Thank you. We have residents. We have residents. We have our Chief of Police for Carteret here. You want to say a few words, Chief? No? No good? Okay.
Chief, come on up here, man. Come on, enjoy the thing.
How you want to do this there?
A couple more, just a little bit. From behind that.
Yeah.
How's that?
Good.
You good?
Yeah, that's good.
All right. We're ready. All right, everyone smile, right? All right, three, two, one. Good. Thank you. And we have Councilwoman, Council President, the head of the Police Committee from Carteret, Councilwoman Susan Naples is here as well. If you want to have a 30-second recess, so all of you could leave if you'd like to leave, because I don't know if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Who came in? The correspondents?
We've been raised to five, we're just in five, three teams. By our support of the community, we have one, we have one, we have one.
Is there a motion to accept the court's funds?
Second.
For favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried, minutes of approval?
Board of County Commissioners is here in April 6, 2022, at 5:00 PM, and Board of County Commissioners, right in the meeting, December 20, 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion to accept? Vocal?
County Commissioner Aswad Waterer?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Garret Rios?
Yes. We have an introduction on our first reading, the Court of Order, Number 22-001.
Guarantee Ordinance 22-001, guarantee ordinance to carry in the Middlesex County Improvement Authorities, currently guaranteed parking revenue bond, Series 2021, Carteret Parking Project, in an aggregate principal amount, not to exceed $6 million, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, February 17, 2022, at 7:00 PM, and authorizing publication arrow.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 22-001 on first reading? Vocal?
County Commissioner Aswad Waterer?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Garret Rios?
Yes. Reports of Commissioners, Commissioner Kyra Bell Aswad Waterer.
Thank you, Director Rios. With the full winter temperatures, I would like to remind our residents, there are seven home energy assistance programs available. All programs have a specific criteria to meet in order to qualify. For further details or to find out how to apply, please call the Middlesex County Office of Agents and Distabil Services, or visit the county website. On February 8th, the NJ New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency will open registration on a new emergency mortgage assistance program. The program will offer up to $35,000 for eligible New Jersey homeowners facing foreclosure or displacement, as well as provide free housing counseling. For more information, you can visit njhousing.gov. And that concludes my report, Director Rios.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director. Just on the agenda for tonight, we have a resolution for Petrell Road in Old Bridge. It is a project that includes 2,400 feet of roadway reconstruction, the recon, the culverts, guard rail, and sidewalk within the project limits. Construction was done in stages, allowing for a lane of traffic in each direction. The project is anticipated to begin in the spring and last for about 18 months, so I echo with word of support on that resolution. Just some stuff that, not on the agenda, but I might point out, I know the Director had shared a Facebook video today on Arlene Valet of Verizon, if I said her name right, if I didn't, I apologize, explaining why Verizon chose Middlesex County as the place that they want to work and set up an autonomous shuttle and autonomous vehicle data center, or yeah, data area. And I think it's a great video, put together, I understand, by Solomon and the crew in his department. And so I just, do we have that, is that going to be on our county website also, or is that just going to be on social media?
Great.
And I hope everybody gets a chance to see that video and see Arlene explain exactly why Verizon chose Middlesex County over some other well-known areas. I want to thank the DPW crew for a great job, the lawyers with the snow removal and the plowing the streets. I was able to, except for having to shovel state in size most of the time, but then I did have to go out at night, and county roads were in great shape. And I just want to thank Gary, Chris, the crew, for the work he can do every time we have a storm. So, thank you. And then the last that I have is, this is Black History Month, the county has done, has the Pan African flag up to support Black History Month, and also, I know that we're doing video and other works on the social media and website for this month, so if anybody's out there, they can check it out on our social media and website. And that's all I have, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie Conklin?
Thank you, Director. The Board of County Commissioners will be introducing the 2022 county budget at the next meeting on February 17th. The plan is to hold public hearing and adoption on March 17th, depending on the state's budget timeline. By adopting the budget early in 2022, the county ensures continuation of many of its services. As of past, in the past several years, the county plans to be the first or second county to adopt a budget in the state. The focus of the 2022 budget is to continue the short and long-term sound fiscal goals and policies we have established over the past 10 years. We will continue to integrate technology into our operations to increase productivity, efficiency, savings, and to control salaries, costs, which ultimately reduce the burden on our taxpayers. Other goals of the 2022 budget are: Controlling and reducing expenditures wherever possible without sacrificing quantity and quality of services provided; Continuing to decrease overall debt and annual debt surplus; Continuing to increase the county's retained surplus fund; Continuing to grow the Pay As You Go Capital Improvement Fund and fund a $60 million capital improvement program to maintain and elevate the county's infrastructure system; Incorporating into the budget the Federal American Rescue Plan funding, as well as the Destination 2040 Plan for both capital and operating projects. The plan is to meet all of these fiscal goals while reducing or holding flat the county's overall tax rate. Further warning, these goals will ensure that the county retain our AAA bond rating for an unprecedented 21st consecutive year. This Commissioner Board is committed to adopt a budget that guarantees that this county continues to perform at a high fiscal level in order to maintain savings while at the same time expanding and maintaining the excellent level of services our taxpayers deserve. And that concludes my report, Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chanel Scott McCollum?
Thank you, Director. From the Arts Institute of Middlesex County, the Arts Institute will be celebrating last issue month in partnership with the Pacific League of Radio and Brunswick for an art and storytelling series every Wednesday at 4:30, with a new reading and an arts-in-prest activity hosted virtually via Zoom. All ages are welcome. Throughout the month of February, the Arts Institute will be collaborating with part organizations to commemorate our African-American community and what their extraordinary political, scientific, artistic, and cultural conditions have come promised to their creativity, courage, and resilience. From February 2nd through May 1st, East Jersey Old Town Village, looking to 1050 River Road at the Scataway, will be hosting a traveling exhibit from the Negro Leagues Baseball Museum, Discover Greatness, featuring close to 90 frame photographs showcasing the history of African-American baseball from the late 1800s to the 1960s. Please visit our website for more information on upcoming events. From the Office of Superintendent of Schools, the Superintendent of Schools will be participating in the Youth Buyers Task Force now, a discussion with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office on February 17 from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. The discussion will focus on successful programs within the county and the 21 recommendations coming out of the Attorney General's Office relating to this matter. Kyle Anderson, interim executive county superintendent, has also been appointed to the Middlesex County Advisory Board for the Reduction of Gun Violence in Schools. The schools are also prepared with the Middlesex County Safety Symposium, sponsored by the Educational Services of New Jersey, in coordination with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, which focuses the overall school safety, students' safety, faculty, community, and pandemic-related personal and environmental issues. I'd like, Commissioner Kenny would also like to acknowledge that February is Black History Month, it is also American Heart Month, and encourage women to go out and check on their cardiovascular health. And also, I'd like to see that Friday, tomorrow, is American Wear Right Day, so in honor of that, I wore my jacket today, so hopefully you'll consider wearing right tomorrow. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Deputy Director Chanty Nara?
Thank you, Director. From the Environmental Health Solid Waste and Recycling Divisions, our divisions monitor and inspect any business in the county that produces, stores, or handles hazardous materials. We require such businesses to complete the appropriate community right-to-know paperwork that reveals the type of materials that are present on the property. This paperwork is subsequently provided to first responders to adequately protect them in advance when they are responding to any incidents on these properties. The divisions will continue these annual inspections during the 2022 fiscal year. Our divisions last year collected 335 tons of tires throughout the county, which were subsequently recycled. We also conducted paint collections from over 7,668 residents, which generated 804,000, 804,000, I'm sorry, 804,000 pounds of materials, which were also safely recycled. These collections, in conjunction with our various other environmental services, continue to keep Middlesex County cleaner and greener. From the Offices of Health Services, the county continues to provide residents with COVID testing and vaccinations. Kindly visit the county's website to register or call our offices at 732-745-3100 for assistance or questions. And I really want to encourage any of our residents who have not yet been vaccinated to please consider doing so. You'll find a breadth of information on our website that can explain to you the efficacy and safe, safety factors related to the vaccines. And I will end my report saying that, our next meeting, I will make sure I have my glasses. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Nara?
Thank you, sir. I too would also like to thank our public employees and parks employees for all their hard work and determination to keep our roads clear and safe during the recent snowstorm. I'm never surprised at the reliability of our employees, and I'm always proud of the fine performance that they do. Try to remember, spring is around the corner, there are some of the upcoming events we can look forward to when the snow finally melts. If you're thinking about summer barbecues, all the qualities of February Union, head over to our website and start the process. Renovations are now being accepted for the 2022 public picnic season, which runs from April 16 through October 16. All reservations are being done on our electronic reservation system, so head over to our website to find all the information you need. Our Youth Conservation Corps, the Middlesex County Youth Conservation Corps is now accepting applications for their spring training. Work will take place on Saturdays starting April 23rd at several or county-owned open space properties. Any student interested in trail building, maintenance, or wildlife habitat improvements projects are welcome to apply. Application can be found on our website, and the deadline is March 4. Adult softball leagues, people are now being accepted for 2022 Parks and Recreation Adult Softball leagues. Games are played in Van Park in Woodbridge and Thomas Edison Park in Edmonds. Applications for the spring fall sessions can be found on our website, and the deadline for spring season is March 11. And please remember that our stadium is reopened last Sat, last weekend, go to our website to find out the times and days that we were open, and the first day we were open, it was a packed house in San Antonio, it was very enviable and vibe of our state, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate what my colleague said about the snowy removal from our DPW, Department of DPW, and our Parks and Recreation, that always come out and they do a tremendous job in cleaning the roads and making them safe for our residents and visitors alike. And I encourage everyone, like my colleague mentioned about the vaccine for the COVID, I highly recommend people to get the two boosters, the two regular shots, or the Johnson One, Johnson, Johnson One, and get the booster as well. It's an important, positive safety measure to take. Okay, Mr. Kelso, do we have any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
Okay, open the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed on the agenda. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, the editor of New Brunswick Today, Community Newspaper, available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. First one I want to ask, that was on page nine, 22-185R, funding for body worn cameras. I wanted to ask, are the county's law enforcement agencies in compliance with the body worn camera mandate?
Yes.
Including the correction.
Correcting. Yes.
I did want to speak against contracts for Remington and Vernick engineers. This is apparently at the request of the Election Board. It's at the bottom of page six, 22-166R.
Page six?
Yes, sir. And I want to explain my opposition. Been learning a lot about the redistricting process, as you know, the latest census, they redraw the lines for congressional districts, they redraw the lines for legislative districts, and in communities where they have ward-based elections, they also have to redraw those wards to make sure they're equal. A terribly untransparent and anti-democratic process has taken place in those five towns, where a, you know, a handful of meetings were held on Microsoft Teams. In many cases, the new maps were adopted before members of the public had a chance to comment. To this day, members of the public have not been given the maps that were submitted for consideration, or the final maps that have been approved. And I'll give you one example from Woodbridge Township. The Rewarding Commission is the six members of the Board of Elections, plus the municipal clerk. The municipal clerk was privy to all three maps, and he shared those maps with the local chairs of the two political parties there, two major political parties who are not on the Rewarding Commission. Despite multiple efforts to obtain those maps, my requests have been denied. I don't even know what the new map looks like, and we are now just a couple months away from the election cycle. Every day that goes by, the insiders gain an advantage by having access to the information about which map was selected, and where everyone's going to be voting, and who's in what district, and who can run for what office. Folks who are not privy to that information are on the outside at a disadvantage, completely unfair. The reason for this is Remington and Vernick gave, you know, non-attorneys gave legal advice to the Board that they shouldn't share this stuff, that they should keep it a secret until it goes through the state, and the county clerk, and all this stuff, even though the insiders have the information. Remington and Vernick has also caused delays in the maps being provided. We just had an election board meeting tonight where myself and some others were giving them grief over this, because we want to know how the elections are going to be held. Elections are not fair if only one side gets to know the rules. And unfortunately, as of now, the vast majority of the public doesn't know what ward they're in, if they live in Woodbridge, Old Bridge, South Amboy, the Scataway, or Monroe, it's a secret which ward you're in, unless you're an incumbent, or you got access to that information because one of the commissioners shared it with you. And Remington Vernick is responsible for this secrecy. They're also responsible for the delays. They're doing this work for many different counties around the state. If you go to the Union County Board of Elections website, you can see the maps, you can see the underlying data, you can go there and look at it, because Remington Vernick did Union County first. They gave Middlesex short shrift, and we still don't have the maps. I have an email from Mr. Tom Wish, the guy who's suggesting you now hire Remington Vernick to do the redistricting at the precinct level for every 25 towns in Middlesex County. On January 20th, he told me, you'll have the maps early next week. That was January 20th. We're here on February 3rd, the maps are still a secret. And I asked the Board of Elections, I said, what harm would there be releasing all the maps, including the ones they didn't pick? Silence. They couldn't come up with a single reason why these maps should be secret. They're just following Remington Vernick's bad advice. And Remington Vernick has bailed us with the reward process. They've turned what should have been a democratic thing into a anti-democratic thing. Please don't hire them for another contract.
Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Mr. Kelso, does any Commissioner have to vote on any? I do separately?
Yes, Director.
You do?
I do, yes. I have to vote separately on 22-163-R, given my association with the Strategic Action Board.
Yes, Commissioner Director, a motion to then be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of Resolution Numbers 22-134 to Resolution 22-197, excluding Resolution 22-163 to be voted upon.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Vocal?
County Commissioner Aswad Waterer?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Garret Rios?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Garret Rios?
Yes. Okay, at this time, I open up the meeting to the public. Anyone wants to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for the time. Derek Pearlman, Somerset, New Jersey. I'm here with the group of the Johnson, friends of the Johnson, or animals, again, I'm sure you're getting sick of seeing me, but Charlie, he's got, you know, he's got the record. Anyway, the reason I'm here today is, we're going to have some more people speaking after me, and you're probably wondering why we continue to keep coming back here, even though you have the Zoo Advisors and Francha Perillo doing their thing. The reason being is that there's still an immediate need for some of these animals to get out now, and we need to really address those and get those three or four animals out before they pass away. So, you'll be getting some more details on that, but that's one of the reasons we're still here, while you guys continue to do the work. The other thing I wanted to talk about is partnering. When we started this process with Mr. Lear and the Commissioners, it wasn't
Commissioner Aswath Alvarado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Garra.
Yes.
Commissioner Mack.
Yes.
Commissioner Director.
Yes.
And now, Director, it would be very appropriate to consider the resolution excluding by Commissioner Marra and that's resolution 22 dash 163.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Aswath Alvarado.
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Garra.
Are they not voting?
Commissioner Mack.
Yes.
Commissioner Director.
Yes. Okay, at this time I open up the meeting to the public. If anyone wants to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for the time. Derek Pearlman, Somerset, New Jersey. I'm here with the group of the Johnson, friends of the Johnson, or animals again. I'm sure you're getting sick of seeing me, but Charlie, he's got, you know, he's got the record. Anyway, the reason I'm here today is we're going to have some more people speaking after me. And you're probably wondering why we continue to keep coming back here even though you have the zoo advisors and Francha Perillo doing their thing. The reason being is that there's still an immediate need for some of these animals to get out now. And we need to really address those and get those three or four animals out before they pass away. So you'll be getting some more details on that, but that's one of the reasons we're still here while you guys continue to do the work. The other thing I wanted to talk about is partnering. When we started this process with Mr. Lear and the Commissioners, it wasn't true partnership. We were working with him. He looked at us as subject matter experts on the animals. And we've worked towards getting sanctuaries lined up and guidelines. Since the decision was made to, you know, step back, we've basically been totally out of the loop. And I'd like to see that partnering back in place if we can. One of the things being is about some documentation, a couple of weeks ago, I asked if we could get a copy of the contracts, any kind of statement of work, you know, weekly project status if it's available, just something so we can feel like we're, you know, part of this because you did rely on us before for expertise and now we're kind of feeling left out. And we can still help by if we identify gaps in your, in zoo advisors' work. What else? You know what? That's about it. Again, just to emphasize, sets of urgency is still happening here because we have animals that need to be taken care of today. And, you know, more transparency, if you commit to getting us some of the documentation, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan Carney. I am from Palm River, New Jersey. I am here representing New Jersey Animal State Movement and the Animals of Johnson Park. And I am representing the video that was submitted to be shown of the Animals of Johnson Park.
This is your five minutes. This is part of your five minutes.
Just so you know, that signs of physiological distress with animals going back and forth like that, that's a sign of trauma and distress as they pace back and forth like that. Notice the raccoons doing the same thing. I do believe they are on a count of four, these two here. Oh, gee. Ah, geez. Put it by a fan, baby, see if it'll take it. Ah, he took it?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Lisa Toria. I currently live at 22 Spruce Lane in Delhi, New Jersey. I'm an administrator at New Jersey Animal State. That was Susan Carney, one of my colleagues. I was born and raised in Woodbridge Township and lived 50% of my long life in Middlesex County. I grew up visiting frequently Johnson Park with my parents, took my two kids there. And I don't ever recall seeing the animals in such poor condition with lack of bedding materials and lack of shelter, especially in the cold weather. Now, you also saw the flood conditions from that devastating flood that we all suffered recently. And our organization, and I know the New Jersey chapter of the United Society of the United States and other animal organizations, advocacy organizations in the state, received calls from residents concerned during that flood about the welfare of the animals. I know our organization and others, including the HSUS, were in contact with various agencies about the welfare and possible evacuation of the animals during that flood. I'm just going to speak on a little bit of a different tangent right now because I think it's a reality that because this is going to be a frequent flood corridor, we are all very well aware of the climate crisis that is worsening. And the reality is that this corridor will continue to flood, hopefully never to that extent, but the reality is that it very may well be flooded to that extent and probably more frequently. Overall, even if these animals were in excellent, in excellent condition and the facility was in perfect condition and they were receiving the care that they should be, this is not a good location any longer for a zoo. I think during emergency situations where our rescuers need to concentrate on rescuing humans and their children, that of course is always a priority. Do we really want to risk personnel and humans having to step in and evacuate animals? Because that's going to be a continuing problem at this facility location. I think it's wise to look forward and in advance, recognize that this is going to be a continuing challenge. Since there are so few animals now at the location, it'd be wise to relinquish them to sanctuaries and restings that are very willing to work with the county to find new homes for the animals or the county should relocate them to other facilities. Because even in the most perfect condition for these animals at this location, it's no longer an adequate location for a zoo. I don't think we want to waste human lives trying to evacuate animals. And it is a shame that they were left in those flood conditions. There was no emergency evacuation plan for that facility. And we did have notice about the rain that was coming, the storm that was coming. And the county was not able or did not recognize that the animals should have been at least relocated in advance of the storm. So I know others are here this evening and should be about the current condition of the animals, the lack of care and shelter. But we also need to look ahead and recognize that this location is no longer adequate or safe for the animals or any rescuers or county personnel that would have to step in and rescue or evacuate the animals. We need to direct our resources towards helping vulnerable people, vulnerable people in the area and residents during emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Edward Acordo.
Could you please speak a little louder and closer to the microphone?
All right. My name is Edward Acordo from Newark, New Jersey. As someone who has friends and relatives living near Johnson Park Zoo, I was shocked to hear about the conditions these animals have been living under when I took a closer look. It is not surprising because that is how zoos are, no matter what attempts they do to make it seem like they care about the animals in their captivity. Whenever I see videos of the zoo on social media, I can't help but wonder, who allowed this to happen? One of the biggest concerns that stands out is that the animals are in a flood zone. The park does not have adequate transportation and the closest evacuation facilities are the under Middlesex parks, which are 20 minutes away. Does the zoo have an actual more effective plan for evacuation yet? Because after the latest hurricane, Ida, in September 2021, sadly, there were animals in the zoo who still perished. Why is there such a park here instead of more apartments? It turns out even land developers have deemed it unsuitable for living. Why are we subjecting these animals to land that humans wouldn't even want to permanently occupy? Wild animals can escape, cross rivers, roads, and get to a wooded shelter area. These animals at the zoo do not have that choice. They have to wait for employees to arrive and help them. When someone calls a park ranger, it takes hours for a problem to get resolved. A facility such as this would need 24/7 qualified competent staffing. Sadly, this is way outside the budget for the parks in Middlesex County. I don't know if you are animal lovers, but I know if you visited the zoo, it would strike this cruel. These animals are living beings. They need heat, heated spaces, and proper diets, obviously. But they are also in need of companionship, enrichment, and space to roaming raves. This is no life for any of them, and they would all be happier at the vetted sanctuaries. You decided to close the zoo in October 2021, citing it was in the best interest of the animals and the workers. There was a petition with over 10,000 signatures supporting that decision. What happened to change your mind? Why is it now open again? Please consider shutting down the zoo permanently and send all the animals to sanctuaries. Please be more compassionate in your decisions. Corrective is over. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Anna Krasowska from Claret Danboy. I want some photographs. Just so you can...
Just so you could get closer to the microphone, speak a little louder, please. Thank you.
These photos are the goat that I want to talk about. It's the black and white mama who gave birth to two kids on August 4th. And right now she looks very pregnant. And if she is pregnant, she's going to be two this month. As you probably heard, we're expecting six more weeks of winter. And we have already experienced below freezing temperatures and snow squalls. This, the black and white goat, she, in one of the photos, she lost a great baby she had supposedly stolen by a fox. And in one of the other photos, she's cuddling up with her friend, the fifth goat. The fifth goat that had the complicated pregnancy and she died with her baby. So... So this black and white goat, she looks very pregnant right now. And she was committed to go to Bailing Twine and Hope Sanctuary after Thanksgiving. And then plans changed and hired those consultants. But this goat, she looks, she really looks pregnant right now. If she waits any longer, she's going to give birth in the freezing cold with nobody on site overnight and the vet doesn't come right away. And in Bailing Twine and Hope, Rachel lives on site, so she would be there day and night. She could offer a heated space for her to give birth in and a vet like on Hope 24/7. So, Rick, I'm not sure if you already had a motor sound on her, but if you haven't, there's no time to waste. If she really is pregnant right now, please don't let any more goats die. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Ryan Feldman, Bridgeton, New Jersey. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to share another update with you on the three critical care animals who you released to our sanctuary. And for those who don't know, my sanctuary, Uncle Neil's Homes, submitted a proposal to Commissioners urging them to release the three most urgent care animals to our sanctuary for rescue and rehabilitation from the zoo. As I shared at the last meeting, the animals have healed so well from living at Johnson Park that most of the ailments that they were suffering from when they were at the zoo no longer exist. And tonight, I specifically want to share the progress of the pig formerly known as Wally. Rick, you know who Wally is. Last meeting, I shared that two of our vets concluded that his diet was so poor and inappropriate at the zoo that it led to morbid obesity, which caused him fat blindness. It means folds of skin were covering his eyes that caused him to go mechanically blind. At the zoo, he couldn't see anything and nothing was done to help him. But yesterday, after only a month and a half, I took this picture of his eye after he was on the proper diet and exercise regimen. He has only been with me for 43 days. And the fact that his eye is visible shows just how much progress that he is making now that he is in a home that supports his needs and basic care. You can see his eye. And at the zoo, nothing was done to help him, he was blind. In fact, being removed from Johnson Park Zoo ultimately saved his life, wouldn't you all agree?
Yes.
Yes, I'm going to take your silence as a yes. And the other pig formerly known as Tank, who your vet recommended euthanizing, instead of giving him the supportive care that we are, he's alive, he's active, he's happy. And I also mentioned last meeting that the vet records that you gave to us, you used a vet named Dr. Rebecca Link. Dr. Link was indicted by the FBI for doping racehorses and infalsifying medical records to conceal the evidence.
What?
Yes. Doping racehorses and concealing medical records.
No comments from the public out there.
This is a yes or no question. Are there two Rebecca Links or does Johnson Park use a veterinarian charged with a felony and cruelty to animals? Rick? Does the vet, Dr. Rebecca Link, she was charged with cruelty to animals?
You're not going to direct questions to Rick. We'll answer your questions later.
You have questions to Rick.
I'm going to leave the meeting here if you're out of order.
So ultimately, being removed from Johnson Park saved Tank's life too, wouldn't you agree? Now, your other vet, Dr. King, examined Milton. You saw the goat, he was in the video and he was the one linking. He was released to a different sanctuary for treatment because he wasn't getting treatment at the zoo. Per vet records, Dr. King recommended euthanizing him on September 12th, 2021. But then two weeks later, he was released to Goat of Anarchy, another sanctuary. Today, he is alive, he's had... Today, he is alive, he's happy, he's thriving. Why is it that the vets that you guys use are either criminals or recommend killing the animal before they will even lift a finger to give them supportive care or improve their quality of life? So wouldn't you agree that being removed from Johnson Park ultimately saved Milton's life too? Here is a direct quote from Middlesex County's website regarding Johnson Park Animal Haven. "The county's animal havens are actually named because they do indeed provide a safe haven for animals." Simple yes or no question. Being that we have heavily documented the negligence and abuse at Johnson Park and animals have drowned and died from lack of care, wouldn't you say that the website's description is a gross misrepresentation? Commissioners, would you agree that the animals' health and quality of life are actually worse off at Johnson Park? You are not rescuing them. This is not a safe haven. You are placing them in solitary confinement to be gob dad for entertainment to fit your own agenda. So then our question still remains. What will bringing in zoo advisors do for the animals if your zookeepers have proven incompetent and quite frankly, endangered to the animals? Your vets would rather kill them than lift a finger to improve their quality of life? And that all of you in charge have had the work of finding animal sanctuaries completed for you, yet you still deny them the life they deserve? And let's not forget that the zoo still remains in a flood zone. How will zoo advisors change that? The reason we're here and we will remain to be here is until you follow through on your word to do the right thing because there are emergency cases that need to be addressed now. Look at the turkeys in this photo in the snow. They don't have shelter, they have a box with three sides. It won't keep elements out, it won't keep predators out. And your zoo supervisor, Chris Tim, told us that a fox took one of the newborn baby goats overnight. How do they stay warm in the winter? How are they protected from predators? You are deliberately choosing them, choosing to keep deserving beings from a life of safety and happiness. What is the driving force? This is animal cruelty by definition. Time's up.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Alex Shannon. I travel here from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, in order to stand before you here tonight to speak up on behalf of the residents living at Johnson Park Animal Haven. I want to first thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak up for a few of the members of our society who cannot speak up for themselves and deserve better. While the current social attitudes do not recognize non-human animals as such, they are in fact full-fledged members of our communities and societies. They deserve every bit of respect that any of your other neighbors would and that, and the protection that any other individual whose well-being you are responsible for should receive. This includes, sorry, this includes being provided basic necessities like shelter from the elements, water, food, and medical care. That does not seem to be what is happening at Johnson Park and things cannot continue as well. During the last few meetings, many people have stood here and talked about the horrible conditions these animals are living in, on top of being in a flood zone that has already caused so much harm. I'm not here to reiterate those details. I want to focus for a moment on a different aspect that I find just as troubling. I watched the commissioners' meeting from January 20th, and I heard the responses that were being given. When asked if due diligence had been done for Jermaine Farm, excuse me if I got the name wrong, who had taken in goats and rabbits from Johnson Park, based on the answer, it seemed to me that it had not been. The answer given for why these animals went to Jermaine Farm instead of one of the approved sanctuaries was that they had helped Johnson Park by providing assistance when it was needed and that the owner was a previous employee with experience caring for animals, so the animals went there. Other places had to go through a thorough approval process, including various documentation submissions and a site visitation. So are the owners of the previously approved sanctuaries not experienced in caring for animals? Would that not already be a basic requirement for approval? I can't know what's going through the minds of the people making these decisions, but at the very least, it does seem clear to me that the best interests of the animals are not a top priority. To me, it is an undeniable demonstration of speciesism, and it is unacceptable. Speciesism is the practice and perpetuation of the idea that it is normal and okay to treat someone differently based solely on the body they were born into, in this case their species, rather than the value that they have as an individual. Every single one of these animals at Johnson Park has the capacity to experience suffering and has an interest in avoiding that suffering. Please sincerely ask yourself this question. If these were dogs living in this park, in these conditions with these ailments, would I need to travel 80 miles to speak up for them here? Would we need to speak up here if you could go to Johnson Park and see a dog under the supervision of the county who is limping around in obvious need of medical attention? Or who is housed in freezing conditions with a block of ice to drink from? Or one who paces back and forth in a state of psychological distress? If we had safe research places ready to take them in, and they were not only denied that liberation, but ignored while some were sent somewhere else where the same standard was not upheld, how would that be received? I think the public outcry would be deafening and rightfully so. So why is it different for the actual residents at Johnson Park? That double standard is speciesism, and it has no place in our culture anymore. Because these animals are sentient individuals, you are obligated to first put yourself in their position before you decide what is good enough. So please do the right thing for them by releasing them to the sanctuaries that have already proven to be equipped to provide adequate care. It is the bare minimum that any dignified member of our society would deserve, and that is who these animals are. Thank you.
Next. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi. My name is Janet Ratliff from Somerset, New Jersey, and I want to share a story. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so it's Tuesday evening, August 17, 2021. Mama Five delivers her baby after park hours alone. The following afternoon, Mama Five was seen in serious distress by Anna and other patrons of the park. She was not able to move, care for, or feed her baby. Baby lay crying for food, appearing very weak and frail. Anna questions Chris Tim and is told Mama had a complicated pregnancy and is just resting, and the vet would be there on Friday. Friday. The workers go home for the day. Anna stays and continues to watch Mama and baby. Mama finally managed to get up while in serious distress and clearly struggling. She appeared to be trying to push out another baby. Something was very wrong. Anna called the park ranger. Keep in mind, Mama had given birth to baby the night prior, and she had not been seen nursing at all. The park ranger arrives and calls head zookeeper Chris Tim. He informs the ranger he would come, but only if Anna leaves, because he didn't want to deal with her. Imagine having to deal with someone that truly cares about these animals. That would be awful. Anna left, never to see Mama and baby again. About two weeks later, while at the park, Anna asked Chris Tim, what happened to Mama and babies? He told her that Mama and baby were fine and in the care of the vet, and Mama was given something to stop her contractions. Mama and baby never returned to the park or were ever seen again. After many months and multiple inquiries, Anna finally got her answer as what happened to Mama, baby, and unborn baby. Rick later finally admitted that they died the night of August 18th. Imagine the horrendous and ongoing pain this Mama and baby suffered so unnecessarily. I've given birth, it pains me to even imagine what this poor Mama endured. None of this would have ever happened if they were just given some medical intervention from the start, something so clearly evident that they needed. The suffering went on while paid workers were right there. You call yourself an animal haven, by definition, a place for safety and refuge. Was Mama and baby kept safe here? I think not. You claim the commissioners' and the workers' main priority is the safety and well-being of the animals. How do you explain this? The director of the park apparently didn't even know this happened. It took months for him to give us an answer. He doesn't know that a pregnant Mama and two babies struggled and suffered for days with no medical care before dying horrendous deaths right in his own backyard, feet from his office? What is the protocol when an animal dies at Johnson's Park Animal Haven? Is there an investigation done? What is the employee's responsibility towards these animals? How is this acceptable to have happened while you have employees being paid with our top tax dollars right there to care for these animals? I don't know how the county works, but any job I ever had, I was given responsibilities and I was evaluated regularly. If I didn't perform my job properly, I would be fired. Now I'd like to show you a picture of your head zookeeper. I happened to Google him, trying to find out what kind of an individual this is. This is your head zookeeper. Okay? It says, "Just putting the finishing touches on my new mask, designed exclusively for the progressive left." Next thing I Googled. Traffic should be light this, light every day. How many people do we need to lose to make that happen? So this is who I found out is your top guy, your number one guy. Is this really who we are trusted to care for these animals? He doesn't even value human life. Is this really the best you can do for these animals at your haven? Anybody?
We will take your comments into consideration. Whoever is speaking, we will take your comments into consideration.
Can you tell me what the protocol is and what the standards?
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
One last look, anybody?
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Vanderstein of Jackson, New Jersey. Today, I will be speaking on Johnson Park Animal Haven about the next move to animals that should be released prior to the zoo advisors making their decision, as these animals are showing signs of needing special rehabilitative treatment that Johnson Park has yet to provide. I would like to mention that I am currently an apprentice rehabber under Garden State Wildlife Center and have had separately worked with exotic and native sanctuary animals since 2018, which qualifies me to be here tonight on behalf of these animals. As mentioned last meeting, all raccoons have been seen and documented exhibiting signs of necosis, which results from the neglect to provide proper stimulation to maintain their mental health and not being able to replicate the life they need, which falls on Johnson Park, not Fish and Wildlife. I would like to point out that Fish and Wildlife are not always at the zoo, and they would not know to the extent to which the raccoons pace, which falls on Johnson Park to address. Obviously, they have neglected to do so. This same information goes for the fox as well, as the fox exhibits the same functionless, unhealthy behavior of pacing, which has also been neglected to be addressed by the park. Do not tell me again that Fish and Wildlife inspects the animals or that Fish and Wildlife passes their health conditions, because Fish and Wildlife are not always there to see everything, but your employees are. Just because Fish and Wildlife doesn't see it doesn't mean that it's okay. Do better for your animals, because they cannot do better for themselves. Antler Ridge Wildlife Sanctuary is committed to the fox and raccoons, so there is no reason for them to be living in such an unhealthy, unnatural state. If you wanted to do the right thing by these wildlife cases, as you claim that you do, then releasing them to Antler Ridge would be the right thing to do. There is a goat that lives on a regular basis at the haven, specifically limping on both front feet. This goat is black and white with blue eyes. Knowing the history of this haven, we can only expect his condition to get worse. And quite frankly, we are all concerned about the lack of veterinary care resulting in the possibility of this poor goat becoming permanently disabled or immobile, just like the animals that have left the haven before. To ensure that no diseases are being spread or body by these animals, can anyone answer as to when the goats had blood testing or stool testing last?
We will take your comments into consideration.
Can anyone tell me how often blood testing or stool testing is done? If it is even ever done? That's what I thought, actually. Knowing that we have to wait for the results to come back from the zoo advisors, are you willing to have these animals suffer until then?
We will answer your questions at a later time.
That's actually really funny. I love that answer. Knowing that we have to wait for the results...
Hold on one second. Amy, could you stop your time for a second? The gentleman that's not wearing his mask, please wear your mask accordingly, otherwise you'll have to be removed. Thank you. All right.
Nippy the mini horse, the poor horse that was never properly socialized and will often show aggression, still has yet to be rehomed to a better fitting sanctuary. There is no valid reason for this, aside from the selfish desires of the people or quote-unquote "animal lovers" wanting him to be around. That is not what a haven is all about, and this county has it backwards. Havens are meant to be protection and peace, not medical issues, neglect, broken promises, and unhealthy animals. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Speak close to the mic.
Yep. My name is Dawn Sittler. I'm from Piscataway. If you think the conditions at Johnson's Park are acceptable, then it is blatantly obvious that you know nothing about the care and needs of these animals, nor do you care about the needs of these animals. You have no business making any decisions about keeping these animals there. Your ignorance towards this matter is causing unnecessary suffering to these animals when there are sanctuaries ready and waiting to give them the homes and care they need and deserve. This only solidifies the proof that you do not care or know what you are doing when it comes to these animals. If these animals were being taken care of, Milton the goat would not have been left to suffer an obvious excruciating pain for months with debilitating arthritis. It was so bad he walked, if that's what you want to call it, on his knees, his body shivering and shaking from the excruciating pain. He would huff and puff, his way of crying, because the pain was so unbearable. If he was being properly cared for, which you claim they are, that would not have been the case, and he would not have had to have been turned over to a sanctuary. You knew he needed help, and you knew you were not going to pay for it, so you gave him to the sanctuary where he received new leg braces, something you would have never done for him because you don't want to spend the money, which again proves that you do not care and are not qualified to make decisions for these animals. Milton is now living his best life. Why isn't the Johnson Park Zoo providing the same? The pigs are another story. One left to get so obese, it is now blind, although now there's good news. It was also so arthritic, you saw in the video, it was walking on its knees, the stomach dragging on its ground. Where was its care? Now the pigs are rolling a warm straw with actual shelter, with an actual floor, and not laying on the frozen, ice-cold ground and not water bowls. We had somebody at the park last week, watched the water bowls get filled, and within 30 minutes, they were frozen. I've seen another goat that walked around for months with a dangling broken leg. One, months, is that what you call care? I'm disgusted, and you should all be embarrassed and ashamed of yourselves for allowing this to continue. Children perceive the neglect as they watch the fox and raccoons pace back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth for hours and hours, going stir crazy. That's care? As a five-year-old, I felt bad for Monty the bear, because I watched him pace back and forth in a cage. And when a five-year-old knows something's wrong, Houston, you have a problem. Now you want to keep the zoo open. Why? You don't want to put any money into it. You've already proved and admitted you don't care or know about how to care for these animals, because you've given up some very sick ones that got sick on your watch that you should have been providing care for. But you don't, not to any of the animals. And the person you call the vet must be a quack, because anyone that says these animals are healthy is out of their minds. So now it seems you got rid of some of your troubled cases, and now you want to keep the zoo open in a FEMA-designated flood plain that has flooded dozens and dozens of times over my 50 years living here. I have doubts, I have no doubts that those grounds must be contaminated, and I dare you to have them tested. Where are the rabbits that were alive and well before Ida? Where are some of the baby goats that were alive and well before Ida? You all have blood on your hands, and the only way to make it right is to end their suffering is to let these animals go to the sanctuaries that are ready and waiting for them to give them their proper homes and the lives they deserve, not living on mud and the freezing cold ground, left to the elements and hail driving rains and driving wind and the cold, trying to survive. This is supposed to be a haven. This is supposed to be a haven, and instead it's hell. It's where animals go to suffer and drown, and you are all responsible for allowing it to continue. All of a sudden, you went from telling our opposition that the zoo needed to close, you admitted it, and it's on record, and now you want to keep it open. It's all very suspicious, and it stinks. Something smells rotten, and we're going to find out what it is, and if someone's being paid off or profiting from the zoo if it is allowed to remain open. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yes, sir. Nicholas Haas, 14 over Rock Road, Somerset NJ 08873. So, this is a follow-up from the last time that I was here regarding the safety and concern for multiple animal lives. I frequent the park often. I have seen no physical change, except for the installation of one key element, which is under the pigeons' guinea fowl's water dish. Before I continue on, I would like to mention that in the twenty-degree weather, the water contained in this bowl still freezes to this day. This tells us that a higher wattage piece of equipment is required, and the existing element is not suitable for its work environment. Let's talk about all the other animals that are currently drinking from blocks of ice during these cold, dark nights. When can we expect to see a licensed electrician run their conduit and supply all the animals with electric, so everyone can at least have the bare minimum, which is thawed water?
Rick? Comment? You direct your questions here. We're taking all your comments into consideration.
Is it possible for chickens and turkeys to have a leak-free roof? When it rains and pours, the sandy ground that these animals walk on end up flooding, pulls the water accumulating while the ground stays wet, which leads us to the formation of bacteria. And for these chickens and turkeys, that's a bacterial infection waiting to happen, known as bumblefoot. Bumblefoot begins on the surface and quickly spreads to the muscle-bone tissue, and if left untreated, can result in death. So can I make a simple request and ask once again? When can we expect to see the chickens and turkeys with a leak-free roof? Leak-free like this roof right here. You know, we're perfectly dry when it rains. We're safe. That's all we're asking for, non-human animals as well. During the snowstorm that just occurred, I wanted to bring to your attention a buckled and bowed roof on a garden shed that the deer call a home. They sleep in an area where the possibility of the roof coming down could occur anytime. The structure of the roof itself looks like a wave that the Pacific Ocean created. Look at it. Look at it tomorrow, Rick, when you're there. Looks like this. It's unfit and unsound at the moment, imposes a threat to the animal's safety. Having an eight-foot-two-by-four propping up the roof, right? That is not the way to go about it. It's likely cheaper to tear the structure down and rebuild from scratch, especially considering all the water absorption that the T-111 wood sheeting has taken on throughout the years. So, when can we expect to see a new structure built, or at least a current roof on the existing structure repaired?
Rick? Commissioners? Comments considered? Okay.
Sandra the pig. He needs a new roof, and he needs a new dwelling altogether. From the last meeting, we touched on the poor quality that is given to him as a home. The pig's house at the bare minimum should be eight square feet with natural venting. What it shouldn't be is a six-foot-square box with no door, nothing to protect him from the elements other than a half-inch sheet of rotted plywood that goes over his head. So, when can we expect Johnson Park to do better and give Sandra the pig at least the home that he deserves? There were four pigs at one point in time. We know two of which went to Uncle Neil's home. One is still there. That's Sandra. So, being that there are four homes to begin with in the pen area where the pigs are located, my question is, where's the last pig? Where's the last pig? Is he here? Is he there? Where is he? Undocumented. Missing. Put him on the side of a milk carton or something, because we can't find him. Can the friends of Johnson Park, this is my most important one, right? Can the friends of Johnson Park meet with Rick sometime this week or next week in order to discuss more questions and concerns regarding animal safety? That's why we're here every two weeks, Rick. We're here for you, just so we can get a conversation.
Can you direct that to the commissioners?
Sorry, sorry. I'll direct to the commissioners. But we are here every two weeks just to talk to Rick. That's all what we're trying to do. You know, so my question...
Time is up.
Time is up. Anyone else in the public? Come on up, otherwise we're going to close the public portion. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick. I got to begin today with an apology. At the last meeting, I made a statement about developer accurate builders, and I incorrectly stated that Mr. Kelso represented them. He was gracious. He came up to me, pointed out that they're not his client. I was wrong, so I apologize to him, and I apologize to all of you and everybody.
Mark this name.
Is it paying him for me, Mr. Kelso?
Hey, when I'm right, I'm right. When I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and I always admit it. So, uh, I do want to pick up where I left off. Our democracy is in crisis. There was an attempted coup at the national level. Uh, and there's been a number of smaller coups at the local level. Both political parties used the pandemic as an excuse to cancel the county committee elections. And our party, the leaders of our party, including some county employees, used that excuse to double the length of their own terms and cancel in perpetuity every other county committee election in the future. In Piscataway, a woman named Shalia Hobson led the charge to remove a duly-elected member from the Piscataway Board of Education. And an administrative law judge had to get involved and restore him to the board, and ruled that, uh, what Ms. Hobson and her allies did undermined the will of the voters. What was her punishment? What were the consequences? Governor Murphy appointed her to a paid position on the Middlesex County Tax Board. The winner of the recent Board of Ed election in Milltown has not been seated, has not been sworn in, because that board is using bogus legal process to try to keep her from being sworn in. She would be the first Latina on that board in history. And of course, Election Day 2021 was a disaster. The equipment that the county purchased failed. Many people were turned away and disenfranchised. And indeed, one of the elections that took place had to be thrown out by a judge. It was overturned. Judge Thomas McFoskey threw out the results of the November election in Ward for Old Bridge. And so, looking at how we got here, we have to look back at the state voter registration system. Uh, in 2013, they gave a ten-year, thirty-million-dollar contract to overhaul that database to a company called Vodum. Vodum went out of business. A company called No Inc. was brought in to finish the job. It took longer than expected. There were a lot of delays and major headaches for the folks who work at the Board of Elections. And one of the biggest headaches was what we call geocoding, mapping the voters to make sure they're in the right ward and district. And who did No Inc. bring in to do the mapping component? Remington and Vernon, the same folks that you just gave a six-figure contract to tonight to redraw all of our districts for the next ten years. In Old Bridge, the voters there don't know which ward lines will be used in the March 22 special election that will be held to make up for the one that was screwed up uh, because the SVRS had incorrect data in it, and some folks were getting ballots for the wrong ward. This is a huge problem. Did any of the commissioners have anything at all to say about our democracy and all these problems with the election equipment and election databases? What, are you as concerned as I am? What are you doing to make sure that our elections are fair and conducted properly?
Charlie, every one of us up here are concerned about the electoral election process. And, and as far as the insurrection on the Capitol, the issue of General Six, that was, that was scary. And, and it's a shame that it happened. But we're making every effort to make sure that every election is fair and open, and we give every vote the opportunity to cast the ballots.
Except the Democratic Committee, elections that were canceled. Do you stand by that decision? Do you, did you, did you think that that was a coup or an insurrection to cancel an election and have people in office double the length of their own terms? Say the voters gave us a two-year term, we're going to double it to four years without the voters getting a say? Was that right?
I'm not going to get into a political debate on opinions, Charlie.
Okay. The New Brunswick Development Corporation, very powerful developer here. The county is paying them for a building that's not being used, 100 Kirkpatrick Street. I heard from Mr. Palomina today that it's not even going to be done till late summer. Why did the county rent that space if you weren't ready to use it?
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Eric Lifton. I live in Highland Park. Um, I want to start off with thank you. I wasn't here last week. I, I, I hope there were other thank yous. Uh, when I was here last, in December, um, we were asking you to get, uh, Husley the ram and the two pigs into a sanctuary. You did! And they're, you heard Ryan, they're doing great! I am so happy about that, and I imagine you are too. And sincerely, sincerely, very thankful for that decision. I'm not going to lie. I'd like to see that decision made for some more animals. And, um, last time I was here, I also asked some questions about some dysentery and rabbits. I could talk with John, very helpful. Um, but really, do you want more reasons why things are a little shifty and, um, problematic at the zoo? You've gotten so much evidence already tonight. And my guess, if I was to be perfectly honest, if I was sitting where you guys are, I would be exhausted. I would be exhausted. There's a whole lot of us coming up saying, saying things again and again. We're going to be back. It must be exhausting. And I sympathize. Because it's exhausting having to come up here and talk about it. Look. At the end of the day, the question is not what we did in the past, what you guys did in the past, what the zoo did in the past. You guys have made a decision to get zoo consultants and an engineering firm to come in and look at this, just make a decision on how to go forward in the future. And you've made that decision, and my guess is you're not going to go back on it. So, that leads me to the question, the animals that are there now in the old system, the system that has led to animals dying and there being no records, no records! A goat being left out, pregnant to die, um, with a baby to die. The, the, what you've seen with the pigs and the, and Milton the goat, and, oh my God, there's, there's a black and white, blue-eyed goat now that's limping. It is my daughter's favorite animal on earth. We used to go visit all the time. We do not now, because it makes her cry seeing it suffering so much. Why not? Hear me out. You're already having zoo consultants and the engineering firm come in. If they decide that we can do things to save these animals and make a better place in the floodplain, you're going to have to move the animals away anyway to make these changes. Why not? You have sanctuaries lined up for every animal in Johnson Park, every single animal. Why not let them go to new homes? Start fresh. Start, start fresh. If, as the haven people are coming with animals, more animals will come in. If you have a better place to start from scratch, there won't, there won't be any risk of continuing shelters that don't shelter, water that freezes, systems that will be coming in to make it better. Why not? Why, why should these animals wait until then? Why should any of these animals wait? There's a pregnant goat right now. Anna was so eloquent with this. Try to go right now, that can go somewhere where we can be certain that will have all the care, instead of wondering. I mean, I was going to talk, I talked with John about how the records lost. Look, I've run a business. If one of my employees said we lost all the records in the flood, I would fire them, because there's no excuse to have records in a flooding place. It is crazy. I'm not saying you should fire anyone. I'm just saying, that's weird. So doesn't that tell you there's a problem? What was, what, we heard about a vet that may have been accused of doping?
We're back away.
Like, like, like maybe, I mean, I'm sure all these things are just bouncing around. You've made a decision. You've made a decision. But let's maybe just let these animals not have to deal, not have to wait until you get answers from these other places. Because it's the middle of winter. It's, it's not pleasant. I, I was talking with John about the five baby fallow deer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sonia Elefante, Highland Park, New Jersey. Good evening, commissioners. Everyone else is present tonight. Um, I want to start off using my time, just asking anyone who's ever, who has a pet or has ever had a pet, just please silently raise your hand. Ever had a pet in your life, including, you can raise hands as well, because we all saw that video that played before. Um, very powerful video, and I know that, you know, I was in the verge of tears watching those animals. Um, imagine seeing your pet in that condition. Like, just imagine it, your dog, your cat, your bunny, whatever it may be, limping, so obese that its stomach is dragging on the ground, so fat that it is fat-blind. It has fat physically blocking its eyes. Like, if a human walked in with any of these conditions to a doctor's office, there would be an immediate intervention put in place. Um, I also wanted to discuss a couple things that we've learned from our Oprah requests. Um, so the first is that the floodwater was documented in official report to be at least four feet high in the playground area right next to Johnson Park Zoo after Hurricane Ida. Um, that area is actually on, on higher ground than the majority of the zoo. Four feet high. Um, imagine a baby fallow deer. Where's their, where's their mouth and nose? Is it four feet in the air? It's definitely not. They're a lot shorter than that. They can't swim yet. Um, deer don't learn how to swim at that young age. And another thing from the Oprah emails that I saw was a resident had actually sent an email to Mr. Lear on August 23rd, so before Ida, just a, a heavy rainstorm, um, and asked about flooding. The response reads, "Most of Johnson Drive is closed until the water recedes." Not the worst flooding we have ever had. Par for the course. Par for the course. Expected, anticipated, like, normal, par for the course, you know? Um, deer dying, par for the course, right? Like, and, you know, I'm just going to kind of go through and read. In 1999, Hurricane Floyd, six people in the state of New Jersey died, nine horses at Johnson Park Zoo died. Hurricane Isabella, 2003, two people. Hurricane Nate, 2005. Hurricane Maria, 2005. Hurricane Bertha, 2008. Earl, 2010. Irene, 2011. Sandy, 2012. These are all hurricanes where multiple human beings in our state died. So I can only imagine how the animals fare. Fay, 2020. Isaiah, 2020. Paulette, 2021. Tropical Storm Teddy, and finally Hurricane Ida. Twenty-three human beings died. Eight fallow deer are missing. Countless rabbits are missing. One goat passed away. One fallow deer escaped, um, very easily could have died. And I don't know, I'm not looking forward to what 2022 holds. Um, there's this old adage that says, you know, this guy goes and he plants a tree, and the tree's dying. It's not growing. It's dying. And he tries to feed it different nutrients and water, and, uh, it's still not growing. And you know why? It's because the tree needs new soil. You can't change and fix the tree when the soil is rotten. You got to move it to new soil. And, uh, the soil we have right now is a flood zone, an incompetent staff, and, and poor management of the park, poor planning, you know? Um, I do want to say that we also put Oprah requests in for the documentation... for the documentation of the death of the eight fallow deer, five of which were babies, who passed away in about a 15-day period between late August and early September when Ida happened. I know we're not allowed to ask questions, but I'll ask hypothetically. EHD is a terrible death. It's a disease. It's a natural thing. Terrible way to go. The deer lose their hair. They lose weight. They have difficulty walking. It's very visible. None of those fallow deer looked sick, ever. And the response we got was all eight of those in a 15-day period passed away due to EHD, which is a hemorrhagic disease.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address and you have five minutes. Please speak close to the microphone and loud, please.
Sure. My name's Taylor Myers. I'm from Highland Park. And I'm still not really clear on why we're not answering questions tonight. I don't, I don't really understand that whole thing. But I just want to let you know that I, along with a lot of people in this room and some people who did not make it to this room, like I almost couldn't, sent a large document, which I think you saw, to the zoo advisors, to Rick Clear and several other people, just outlining all the problems with the zoo. And we basically did their research for them. So I'm just, I just want to throw that out there. In that email, we requested a meeting with Rick Clear. We've requested that several times since the last time he's been here. And we have received nothing. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I was going to ask about your rescinding the decision to close the zoo in the first place because I, I'm still not clear on that either. So what, what I basically have is that you promised a closure of the zoo, completely following the plan, pre-election. And then, three of you were reelected. All of a sudden, not so much of that, right? So I'm a little bit curious about that. So I'm, I have to just think that it's public pressure, that maybe you have some idea that there's some sort of public pressure, that maybe the zoo is wanted by many people, for what it's worth. I don't, I actually know that not many of you frequent the zoo because we're there almost every day. And there's never more than about 10 people there at a time. And they're the same, maybe handful of people. I think you might have... Actually, I know for a fact because there's a petition signed by all the people who would love to keep the zoo and it's 600 people. There's a petition signed by the people who would love to get, see these animals in good, healthy sanctuaries. And that's 10,000 people. I mean, I don't, I don't know if you guys speak in votes because it seems like you do from, you know, the timeline of things. But that seems to be like a pretty clear and obvious public pressure on the side of closing this thing down, right? You can really honestly go to the zoo and I'd love to see the data. If the zoo advisor is putting this data together, I'd love to see it. How many people actually frequent the zoo? I would be willing to bet 600 sounds way high, to be honest with you. I think that you're, you're looking at several of the people who frequent the zoo and that's about it. So I guess I was going to ask why you rescinded that decision and do you have an answer? So I wanted to also, just on the same line of public pressure, just remind you that you are elected officials and you're not all up for reelection this year. Some of you are. We're not going to forget this. Regardless of whether or not the zoo gets closed in a month or three months or isn't closed by that election, right? There's also other possibilities in place, right? There is the possibility of a recall election. I know that most of you are familiar with that term. And we have looked into this as well. So I'm not afraid to do that. And I don't think that you'd win, to be honest. Because you don't have public support on this. Period. This is, that's, that's just the facts, right? You, I don't know. I don't know how else to put it because you obviously speak in votes. That's what you speak in. That's the language. I'm going to go with. You don't have your votes on this. Sorry. I, I don't know. So I just, I would be afraid for your seats if I were you guys because I would vote you out in a second if this were up to me, right? Thank you.
Multi-closer? All in favor? I have one comment to make. First of all, yes, we did have people come here and that are in favor of keeping the animal haven open. And that is our assessment, that, why we're doing the assessment from both sides of the argument. Rick, you want to make some comments? Rick?
Yes, I'm sorry. Just, just to kind of keep the board informed with regard to just some of the developments at Johnson Park. Last Thursday, the 27th, we were visited by an inspector for the United States Department of Agriculture, an inspector from New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife and a veterinarian from the New Jersey Department of Agriculture. This was an unannounced visit. They showed up at Johnson Park. My staff spent about three hours with them, took them to every animal pen or enclosure, every structure, whatever they wanted to see, sat down with them, answered all their questions. So our certified agency King, in response to some of the allegations of suffering, of poor conditions, and they did a thorough inspection. So what I'm going to do and I'm happy to be able to take and once I have their reports and they have been approved by their supervisors and they're forwarded to my office, I'll package those up and send them out to the peership board. They identified a couple of maintenance items that we took care of, my staff took care of right away in order to, to satisfy their concerns during their inspection. But again, that was, that was all three inspectors, including a vet, who spent a significant amount of time in Johnson Park. We're always happy that doors open for them to come to look and to assess our operations, to provide feedback from them on others that we can do better. Just to follow, just on a couple of other things and make notes, you know, so that we can go ahead and summarize those questions, send them to our professionals so that, okay, if we have additional things that we want them to look at, we'll be able to provide them for the professionals. We did have our vet in, Dr. King was in recently to examine any of the pregnant goats, provide an ultrasound so that then we can get her assessment as far as their health and well-being. We have, in order to kind of address imminent births, we do have already a, what, a birthing barn set up already adjacent to the maintenance building. It's got its own dedicated section. The mothers have their own dedicated space. It is adjacent to the indoor of the staff, sorry, the maintenance garage. So anybody needs to go inside for any reason whatsoever, we've got all that set up and we've made preparations. And then director, of course, you know, as we've spoken many times, during this cold, series of cold events that we've had, the staff has been in, a lot of them are pulling overnight shifts, getting out every four hours, checking, assessing, making sure no one is in need, right? Cleaning up water dishes, keeping everybody well, well-watered and providing for whatever needs they have during these particularly cold times because it has been cold, you know, during these, these couple of events we've had here. So it's just operationally kind of an update for the board on some of the things happening.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to close? A motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried being adjourned.